Okay. Welcome to town in Baltimore Planning Board, 7:00 PM, April 10th, 2025. Start off tonight, we have a public hearing on a proposed convenience store. Located on Route 9W, down by the thruway. Who's here representing? Well, we, first thing we do is we gotta have all the.
We have all but one.
Oh, they already gave them to you?
Yep, we have all but one and all receipts that they were sent.
Oh, okay, good. What I'd like to do is, if you could give people, the audience. LED's quiet.
She thought you forgot the pledge allegiance, that's what I was telling her.
We got it under control.
Not all time.
But if you could give us a brief presentation, if you would, to the, you know, people in the audience, maybe someone here to.
Absolutely.
If you would, Rich.
Okay. Rich Nolan from Nolan Engineering, Burn Hills, about an hour away. This site is located at 12552 Route 9W. And the owner is proposing to put a convenience store there. I've known the owner for several years, he has about, I'd say at least thirty of them. They're very well done and maintained. It has, I'll show you some pictures, but it has, you know, your typical canopy with your gas pumps. And inside, it'll have like a Dunkin' Donuts and then your regular convenience shelving and stuff like that. I'll show you the site plan. Probably a good one to look at here. This is probably a good one here. This is the new proposed gas station, convenience store, with the canopy here, with six pumps. There's actually two in the back for diesel trucks as well. There are two entrances.
Rich, I think we're gonna have to speak to the people in the back.
Okay, thank you. There's two entrances and for the diesel, trucks that need diesel will pull around back, fuel up, and there's parking spots for them here. For people stopping at the convenience store, there's parking across the front. And then you have your normal gas pumps, you know, where you expect them to come from there. You know, we put new landscaping in, obviously, with any new project. It's pretty straightforward in those regards, I mean, if you have questions, I don't know if you'll have to ask me or you'd ask the board, but.
Department for the truck.
Excuse me, just one second, if you don't mind, would you please come forward and just give us your name so we have it on the record? For any questions, we'll open it up to the public, so if anybody has any questions or comments, just so we know who's.
Kirk Buckles.
Yep.
Lives at 12533 Route 9W.
Is that your cross?
Across from the.
Okay, yep.
This whole project. So, yeah, I have a few questions. Actually, I didn't know that it's gone this far into the planning. We're living right across the street from it. But, yeah, so I have interest in the diesel trucks idling all night long. How long are they gonna be there? Is that like gonna be a resting area for truck drivers? So, running trucks all night?
I don't think you have that kind of room that they could, so.
What you had for it.
Yeah, well, sure. And we do have the owner here, that's probably what we'll ask him, but you're correct, we have six parking spots for the trucks. I don't know if that's for them to run inside and get stuff, but the owner, Chima's here, so, did you hear the question, Chima?
Yes.
Can you address that?
Yeah, I don't think the truck will be, because we don't, they're not be staying overnight, they're not allowing the trucks to stay overnight in there anyway.
But are they gonna be idling?
No.
While they're sitting there?
Like, if somebody will go inside.
Lot of diesel trucks.
Yeah.
They idle while they're sitting.
Yeah, like when they will go inside, you don't need to, like something to add, something to eat and stuff like that.
And your house is located over here, sir?
Yes, really.
So, it is at the furthest part of the property that we could put that, just obviously.
So, is this where the hotel is?
Yeah, I believe it's over here somewhere, or is it?
Yeah.
So, this parking will be where that brick house is?
Yeah.
See, and I'm right across from that, so, yeah, that's a concern.
So, you're saying if they stop to get something to eat, they're gonna probably keep their truck running, but they're not gonna be there all night long?
Yes.
Just so you know.
And is that kind of like a guarantee?
Most of my trucks, the modern ones, have a five-minute shutdown.
Okay.
And also, in most of your rest areas, you see a limitation on any idling too.
I mean, we would be open to put up a sign at those parking spots that say, I've seen those around myself. We could put, you know, the signs at the end of the parking spots that say, we're, you know, no idling or five-minute idling or something to that effect.
No overnight idling?
Yeah, no, but a lot of the trucks actually have in your computer, when they sit there without anybody touching their trial or whatnot, if for five minutes, they automatically shut down.
So, how do they use like air conditioning and stuff like that when they're overnighting?
I don't know.
They must have an external generator or something.
I don't, I'm not sure.
It's a valid concern.
Just they have some place to plug in, I don't know.
Guess another question would be, you know, trucks are so much quieter now, do you think you would hear that from your spot? I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
They do park in the hotel area too. Where this other parking party, right next to the hotel parking, the trucks stay overnight there too.
Yeah, but that's not over by me.
No, we have the parking, where our parking is, their parking is just next to us.
Then that by me again? You're saying that the park, they're staying overnight next to this?
At the Best Western?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, they have the parking there on the back, so the trucks stay there and they stay overnight like in the hotel. And they park their truck behind the.
And that's about another 200 feet past where he is?
Yeah.
That is, I know where that is.
Have you heard any commotion from that?
No.
Okay.
No.
Yeah, so their parking is just next to us.
Oh, okay.
But as far as the signs go, I think we would be amenable to that.
Right.
Also, maybe signs say no overnight parking?
I mean, if they want to park overnight.
Just because a lot of times they can slip in their trucks, so.
Yeah.
You know?
Sounds like they could, you know, we put those signs, if they could drive over to the hotel and stay over there.
Right.
Do you have another question?
I do.
Okay.
Lighting.
Yeah.
How is that all gonna be designed?
Excellent question, that's pretty well-known now that lighting bothers a lot of people. But all planning boards, they can't have the lighting go off-site, so it's all downgrading, it's called contained on-site. And we have a whole sheet that done by an engineer to prove that the light just lights the parking lot. Absolutely, you know, we don't want light shining off the site, so lighting is contained on-site.
No pan?
Yeah.
And is there gonna be a third lane in the highway?
I don't think we're putting it, we have a traffic person here who's gonna speak to that, but I don't think there's gonna be a third lane.
Wendy Holsberger from Lansing Engineering, so there is no.
Or a turning lane?
No, there's no proposed lighting for 9W.
And then where is my mailbox gonna go?
Does that have to move to you?
Where is your mailbox presently? Is it on your side of the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's no reason to move a mailbox off the roadway.
It's on, it's gonna be right in the middle of your project.
Biggest spot, where, you know? So, it's on the site side of the road?
On the site side of the road.
Okay.
Yeah, all of our mailboxes are there.
So, if they're within the driveway, then they would obviously be relocated as part of the project, if they're not, I mean, if if it needs to be relocated, it would just be relocated, but if it's not in the driveway, I don't know that there's a need for it.
So, I'm sorry, where's your house on this?
Okay. Where is 9W here, right here?
Where's 9W?
Unlike right here.
So, you're across this street, you're across the street?
Yeah.
Yeah, then we wouldn't have to move the.
No, you're saying, are you saying your mailbox is not on the side of the road?
It's gonna be all on that side of the road.
Right.
And you don't wanna put a turning lane in.
Yeah, there's no turning lane being proposed on 9W, there's no mitigation. On 9W, the only thing we're doing is putting driveways, driveways in. So, there's no widening to 9W proposed.
And my mailbox isn't gonna be up the road? Right? I'm not gonna have to walk to get my mail, right?
I hope not, that's not our plan.
You know, yeah, no, but I like to get it settled, you know? Yeah.
You don't wanna walk down Hook Sock, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, I like get right across the street. Unless you're gonna put it on my side of the road, but you can't do that either.
Does the site plan show the mailbox falling in that entrance?
No.
I don't think it does.
No, I don't know exactly where.
Sir, can you point out your house on here, so we can settle? Can you tell where it is from that satellite map? Which one's yours? So, here's the project site, right here. Okay, perfect, thank you. Also, how far is the prime from the interstate? The most closest from the interstate? Is it?
Do you know the answer?
Just a couple hundred yards?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the exact, the exact.
I mean, if you talk, I mean, we're talking about noise, I'm sure, I live a mile away from the interstate and I can hear it all night long.
I mean, you could see that, you can see the interstate from the side.
I can't imagine that truck idling will be noisier than that.
I got trains.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're sitting on the side, you could see the driveway, it's right behind you.
You can't open the front of the house, you hear everything, which I'm used to anyway, so that doesn't bother me, so. You can only open the sides and the back.
I mean, Robbie, you would know more about diesel trucks, they're not really noisy idling in the beginning, are they?
No, most, all your newer trucks are really, very quiet.
Yeah, right.
And like I say, they, most of them, because they, you look in the rest areas, they have, you'll get ticketed for extended idling. Now, most of them have a shutdown.
I mean, that's a good question, a good concern, but I don't.
Single required to not idle more than 15 minutes?
Well, mine will only idle five minutes if you don't put any minutes shut down. And I know a lot of businesses have the residential mailboxes, I'm sure you're gonna receive mail also. Yeah, they're all usually right together. In convenient air, or with a soup, but we're not assuming, we're asking for this kind of.
Well, if there needs to be a change to the mailbox, we will take care of that for you, right, Chima?
Yes.
I'll let you know when I have more. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your questions. Anyone else in the audience has any questions, comments? Anybody in the board to think of anything? Want to ask Mr. Nolan?
We do have in the audience the stormwater person who completed the stormwater and obviously the traffic person.
Yeah.
So, since we were here last time, we did make some minor changes to, for the parking and the trucks in the back, because based on the turn radius study, we just needed to move the driveways.
Do you want to explain that, because I was just reading about the tractor trail returning and going in and having enough space to get out?
Sure, so one of the things, in our original study that was completed, we did mostly the turning movements we looked at where the fueling vehicle and emergency vehicles in the front, and then we were asked to look at the larger vehicles in the back. So, when we did that, and with the parking stalls, it was tight for them to back up and get, and get out. So, we did make a recommendation to extend that space a bit, so there's more room between the parking and the diesel fueling pumps so that there's more maneuverability, so the larger vehicles came back from those parking spots and not interfere with the fueling positions and then leave the site, so there was a radius, we also widened, also widened the driveway as well.
Okay, so everything's still in the front?
Yes, it's, the site is still separated, it's just the back got extended a little bit, so that that maneuverability for the larger vehicles is.
Did that encroach on your stormwater area or not?
I have a question.
Let me just finish this point, okay? Did that encroach on your stormwater area by doing that, or?
I don't believe so, that's a bad one, no.
Okay. Okay. Bill, you got something?
For the, for the stormwater, is it going to a pit?
Steve, consulting engineering, the stormwater is all being painted on-site and diverted to a bioretention basin. The bioretention basin treats both the water quality volume and your runoff reduction, which is required under the New York State's D E C Stormwater Design Manual for a project of this magnitude. The, and underneath the bioretention basin, basically what it is, is it's a planting soil, usually about 24 to 30 inches deep with mulch and landscaping in it, so it doesn't look like a big hole or pit, it actually has some aesthetic appeal to it. But underneath it, there is a series of underdrains, so any water that isn't being taken up by the plantings will get into the underdrain and drain off the site. There also is a controlled outlet and the water can pond a maximum of six inches in that structure, so you don't have those big, deep fluctuations before it goes out. We are detaining the stormwater to a significant level below the existing condition rates, so you're not gonna have any issues downstream from that.
Just one, I don't know how it would apply, but as far as I know, there's no hydrants in the area. And could the stormwater be used to draft from, or, you know?
There wouldn't be enough water, it's dry most of the time, only during, wet during storm events, and then again, maximum of six inches deep, and then it will filter down into the underdrain. So, it won't be able to be used for that.
Good, thanks. You had another question you said, or I go to your side, you were thinking there.
Yes. To the trucks pulling out. Living across the street from the motel. There's a lot of accidents from trucks pulling out. Little crashes that happen there.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, when the trucks are pulling out, so now you're saying you're gonna have another exit, or are they gonna be pulling out of the same exit?
A lot of vehicles that.
So, on the site, the trucks will be entering, the closer, this second entrance here is an exit only. So, all vehicles will be entering in the southern, the southern driveway, so that's an enter and exit for for passenger cars, and then it also provides future access to the back, and then we're connecting to next door, so we're actually removing there's an existing curb cut that goes to that parking lot, so that's all being combined. So, access management there, where we're actually combining and having one driveway for numerous parcels, and then the secondary, to the owner of the driveway, will be an exit only.
Oh, okay. But that's the closest exit to the hotel exit.
Yeah, I think that's just showing on.
Scarier, with just the two lanes.
It meets, yeah, no, but it meets spacing, the Department of Transportation, it's their roadway, they've looked, they looked at the study. They've given initial feedback to us just today, actually, that they were talking about, you know, potentially widening that truck access a little bit, so it's not.
With my eyes, so, you know, so.
But it does meet spacing requirements of, you know, intersection spacing for driveways.
Just wanted to point something out, you were worried about lighting, and you have a right to be worried about lighting, because when the trucks are leaving, we're just looking at the map and where your house is and your driveway is, and there is the potential of a light shining up your driveway towards your house. Your house is, shows, looks elevated from what we can see.
It is, but it's not high, you know?
I don't know how they, you know, remediate that.
I mean, I don't know how that's gonna work, because, you know, I never had to deal with that yet, that's down the road, you know?
Would it make a difference if the exit became the entrance and the entrance the exit?
It would definitely make a big difference. I don't know if that's possible, I don't know if that's possible, not the way it's laid out.
But I think, just living there, there should be like a third lane.
Well, what we, what we've done from the plans, and I don't know if you've changed it yet, we asked to have the exit to the right. The radius expanded, so when the trucks pull out, they don't have to cross over, you know, into the other lane, so they have enough room there.
Right, and that, that is, that, and DOT has standards for how wide they'll allow the radius to be, and actually, we they just told us to also widen it again, which I think because it's a truck access, when it's multi, when it's mixed vehicles, the driveway is bigger than passenger cars tend to go faster and that, so I think because it's a truck-only exit, that they're more amenable to widening, widening that radius even more. Where we could also put mountable curbs, things like that in, so that the driveway stays tighter, but also has the room for the wheelbases.
So, back to the X, when they exit and the lights. Not seeing that, you're saying that it's, it isn't possible to.
His house is right directly across from you?
Yes.
It's close, he has a lot of trees around the front, so like right up his driveway, and he's.
Trees.
And he's probably 50, 60 feet off.
I have a clear view, I'm through, I'm 359 feet off the road. And that brick house is my view every day of my life. I can see that whole property. So, that's all my view. There's no trees. You know, that's clear there, there's nothing there. There is.
Is the brick house where the, is the, is the, the current road that's there, is that the exit?
No.
Or is it, is it south of that?
See, that's.
North of it, the current driveway, the, it's, the exit only is north of.
That's a separate, that's the one I'm talking about, that, where a lot of, you know, there's been a few accidents.
For you, is this, how far is this current existing driveway from where the other driveways go with the exit going?
Other exit driveway.
So.
Is it southbound?
So, this, the shared driveway, the, that is, that's, right, that is the driveway that you're looking at, it's right about where that existing driveway is?
No, it's not, is it, wait, I thought that's down by the dentist's office?
Which is here, and I'm saying the exit only is north of that.
That's what I'm, I'm asking you, that exit, where is it compared to this? Do you show the existing driveway on here? Is that it right there? No, that's not even to the left, is it?
That's the driveway. Yeah, so this is the shared driveway that you were just.
No, the shared driveway is by the dentist's office.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'm on the, I'm on the other side of the property, I'm there.
Yeah, sorry, I thought you were talking about.
That's okay, I'm just trying to give him a layout of where just everything is.
So, that's where you put another exit, it's like going out into.
We gotta hold on one second.
Yeah, you're about 50 feet to the south of that driveway.
Okay, so his home is in, show me that on your map, right there?
So, this is that existing driveway there.
Not directly, he's a little further, yeah, so he's south of that, yeah, he's looking, he's looking right at, right in the exit. Basically. His mailbox is where the exit is, right?
I knew that was gonna be a problem.
May, maybe it's, maybe it's the driveways to the, to the right of that, right?
No, they're straight here, that's across the street, that's the mailbox.
No, I.
Right there.
Oh, it's shown, okay, so that's gonna have to be right there?
Yeah, that has to be moved about 20 feet to the north, I would think, 20, 30 feet to the north. So, I have to walk and rent.
Well, you will have a new convenience store across the street from you.
Ice cream.
Your chicken is amazing. Can I have the store week 24 hours?
Question.
No, your store's not 24 hours, are they? Oh, maybe, is this one?
This one is not, as far as we recall.
No, I don't believe it is, no.
What are the hours of the store to be?
It's gonna be fine until midnight.
Ellie, you got a question?
Can we go back to where you have the other map, come on down? It concerns that, this area right here where you say they're gonna come out, right? But the auto traffic is coming out this way, Kieran, you've got trucks coming this way?
No, I don't believe they can come out this way, right?
The trucks are exiting only at the one-way.
Yeah, they can only go that way.
Okay, because the people that park in that existing parking lot.
It's the dentist's office.
Right, I'm on the right spot, because it's an existing parking lot, but the people tend to go a little fast when they wanna get out, that's what I'm trying to avoid, a collision with a truck and a car.
That's, that was my thing, that whole area right there, you really do need to put a third lane in if you wanna put a bigger or, yeah, you know, a third lane would, because how the tractors, trailers just pull out of there? Yeah, they got the room, yes, they can do it, but no, it doesn't happen that way sometimes. Yeah, because, you know, and if there was a third lane.
Is there a third lane down where the current trucks are?
There.
There is. Well, it is a switched lane, as they have a, they have a wide median.
In the middle. Is that also gonna be blocked up?
Yes.
Or going in there?
Oh, the driveway will be asked, that's the net.
So, the north entrance, the ones you widen out, correct?
Do we widen? Yes.
Okay.
And that's the exit for the trucks, correct?
Yes.
Is that current, the current widen, is this, or there's a new map, but it widened?
No, it's gonna be, it's probably gonna be widened a little bit more from there, yeah, right.
Is it comparable to the entrance on the Best Western, I don't know if you know that or not?
I don't know, we didn't compare.
Because there is a lot of truck traffic, like you said, comes down the Best Western.
And it is, it's a one-way driveway, so it's a little different than a two-way, where you have a little more wiggle.
Yes, it does help tremendously.
That one lane approach will be wider than a typical two-way.
That, so that'll definitely be labeled exit only, right?
Correct.
Okay, that'll be a big help for trucks pulling out now.
Yes.
Okay, anyone else with questions, comments? Okay, your motion to close the public hearing?
A motion to close the public hearing for the Chima-proposed gas station convenience store.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, second, well, favorite, all right, public hearing closed. Okay, everyone, please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, in due republic, where it stands, one one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, seeing how we have everyone here involved in the project, I'd like to, um, take a few minutes to go over this. Want to come up?
Yes.
Okay. I, I think we got a fair laundry list of stuff that needs to be tackled, the way I'm seeing it, maybe I'm wrong, but.
So, um, hi, everyone, I'm Camille Barnevich with Creighton Engineering, uh, town engineering engineer. Um, just to give you some background, we did go through multiple iterations already with review comments. Uh, this is our fourth review letter that we've issued. Things we take a look at is site plan layout, grading, lighting, landscaping, um, SWIFT and, and also agency curbing. Um, so, from our last letter, review letter number three, uh, the applicant did address many of the comments that we've had, um, in that last correspondence. Uh, I think said there are a few things listed in this new letter that I think we just need to tidy up for final, uh, you know, complete site plans. Um, with several conditions that I think we should include, um, should a decision be made on the application. So, uh, our latest review letter dated April eighth, addressed a few things and Mr. Chairman a few of the names, a few of the items.
I would appreciate it if you would go through that, you know, so I'd like to get this all pinned down.
Yeah.
So, I mean, not wasting everybody's time, you know, back and forth and just get this done, you know, so.
Absolutely. So number one, the law consolidation map, I know that was submitted by the applicant, including the survey. Um, I just want to note for you, for that, that should be made a condition of the resolution. Uh, essentially that's filed with the county clerk, recorded, uh, and proof of that recording be provided. Um, we did catch one thing on the updated map, um, that we'd like to see the easement, uh, to the north. I think it was missing the, um, utility easement that was noted on the plans, uh, for the water and sewer service. So, uh, we found that that wasn't provided on the, on the map, and we just ask that that's added, uh, you know, when you do file with the county clerk. In terms of the site plan itself, uh, we had a few, you know, a lot of the stuff was addressed in our last letter, which is great. Um, there is a couple of details that we had questions on relating to gas stations that we just had in this latest letter. Um, and the applicant responded these today or response letter. Um, things like, uh, vacuum equipment, you know, um, air pressure, you know, filling station, you know, those are gonna be provided on the site. If you just show those.
Vacuum, okay.
Yeah, if you could just show those on the plan, usually they, you know, it'll be right next to a stall or something, but it's just good to, to show that where that is, where, where you can see the vehicles will be filling their, their tires or their, or, you know, vacuuming their cars, typical for gas stations and convenience stores. The HVAC equipment, um, do you know how that's gonna be?
It just gonna be the, this one unit with the air and the vacuum, just for one.
Okay.
That's what the, we can re-quiet, so, we don't require more than that.
Is that gonna be either from the back of the site or from the side?
That we can see like maybe on the back of, or some, or on the, like the one part of the park, we can just put it here.
You mean the building HVAC?
Yeah, the building HVAC, so like it's gonna be on a pad or something.
We normally, oh, okay, like if there's an exterior thing, okay.
Exterior.
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, we will be like concrete pad, we will put it on that.
Okay.
That's on the back of the.
So, yeah, just typically with that stuff, we just ask that it's screened with like a, a small fence, just so it's hidden from public view. It's just mechanical equipment, just doesn't, doesn't look good from the eye. So, you know, we just ask that that's shown on the plan, uh, if it's on a pad, show it on the site plan, you know, your building, so we can see everything involved around the building. Um, uh, a couple of consistency items that, that just need to be updated for the final plans. You know, the, the three added employee spaces were, were provided from our last meeting. Um, those should be reflected on the grading and drainage plan, uh, as well as the lighting plan. Uh, things like that, typically you get ironed out later on and, and during your final site plan review and approval. The site triangles, I, I saw in the letter, uh, that they're gonna be provided on the plan, but I didn't see them on the site plan, I don't know if I, if I missed them. But, um, if we could just add the site triangles, um, so we can visually see it on the plan. Uh, in terms of the grading plan and drainage and ADA design, um, do you know what the intent was for just the front access is gonna be flush mounted with the entrance? Or is it?
The flush curve at the right front.
Flush curve.
Okay.
So just tighten up the, the grading plan, I think we're showing a six-inch curve there, but just show the actual, uh, ADA design associated with it. Um, typical stuff for, for gas stations and, and any site plan. Utility plan, um, we just need to see additional information for inverts and slopes. I think we're showing it schematically, um, like we still don't see the, you know, slopes of the pipes going to the septic tank, the, uh, you know, conflicts with other utilities, um, things of that nature, we just need to tighten up and iron up before we, uh, you know, have a full, full base plan set.
While, while you're on that, I mean, I don't see where we've seen any confirmation of what's in the ground for the septic, has it been done?
Yeah, we've been working on that, we just, we had a Zoom meeting with the D E C two days ago about transferring the speeding permit, and we did include the septic.
Yeah, but has anybody put boots on the ground?
We are scheduling, we're having, we're trying to schedule with the person that actually installed it, and, uh, he's pretty rough.
Paul's not.
Yeah. And, uh, and my guy called him again today after, like, after three weeks and goes, I got a job right now, so we're, we're.
My, my point is this, this is your basic infrastructure, and this has been going on and on and on and on, you know?
Well, it's right, it's winter time, we're gonna work it out anyways, but we're, we're, we're gonna try, we will get it inspected and, um, we're actively.
I mean, you sent us a set of plans, which was for Bristol Manor.
Right.
And I, I guess this mirrors that.
So we found out, talking to the D E C yesterday, that he actually installed these without getting a permit, and he used a Bristol Myers plant, so we're working with them, uh, to get it, uh, approved and permitted. Actively working with them, but we just had our kickoff meeting like earlier this week with them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they noted all that in their responses, that they're gonna be taking a look at it. Um, you know, if it was, if the tank was installed for the Bristol Myers, you know, I think that was pretty, pretty large in size, if I remember. So if they use the larger sized tank, it's only a beneficial thing for, for this use.
So are, are you gonna pump from your building to this system?
Yes.
Okay, so you don't have to worry about elevations as much?
Right. Um, and then like he mentioned, it is, the system that was installed is about four times the capacity that we, so we don't exceed to be a problem. But we will inspect all the components with cameras and, and, and lay all that out.
Because like at this point, you really don't know what's even there.
No, we do, it's all visible, actually.
Well, the tops have some of.
The tops and the, and the sand filters and all that.
Yeah, I would just recommend that that's, you know, remain a condition of, of any, any decision, just to confirm those utilities.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I don't think it's something that needs to hold things up, but they do need to make sure that that's, uh, sufficient and. Likewise with the water system, um, you know, they're, they're scheduling the yield tests for May ninth, so, um, you know, we'll await those results. Um, I think there was a comment about a, a water tank being provided, you know, if that's gonna be, uh, you know, underground or above ground?
In the building.
In the building, okay, so that's gonna be tucked away, so you won't see that outside. Um, so they're gonna provide a thousand gallon water tank inside the building to have, you know, supplemental water supply in case, uh, in case they need it.
Now, excuse me, since there's no plan on water and sewer, how about the project from the water and sewer under the thruway and that way we all can benefit from it?
They better have deep pockets.
Yeah, and we heard what the price tag was last time.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, a couple of things with the water, the fire suppression system, they noted that the building doesn't require sprinklers. Um, they also noted that the, the canopy for the, for the fueling area is gonna be, uh, some type of dry system, chemical system. And all those things will come later on, uh, during building department review, so we, we would just hold that as a condition of, of any decision. Um, speaking more on the plans, uh, we just had some minor landscaping comments. Overall, I think the landscaping is fine, the, we did some opportunities, find some opportunities north of the site, just to fill in some of the islands, just to make it look a little bit more filled in rather than, uh, lawn areas, so. Uh, we asked that the applicant look at that, uh, you know, additional ground cover along the building prime, just to make it look a little bit more, uh, you know, better, better looking. In terms of the stormwater, uh, the fire retention, fire retention, uh, system is oversized and it's designed to store the site, uh, stormwater. Um, it does need the reductions required, uh, and significantly improves the stormwater. Um, I did have a comment there about the spillway that, um, I just wanna make sure you take a look that, to make sure that, um, in a hundred-year storm, just to make sure that the, the overflow doesn't end up going north to that hotel.
I think we looked at that and adjusted the grade.
Okay, yeah. I figured it was.
Go about the comma.
Okay, so just, I wanted to make sure that there, if that basin over tops, um, the water wouldn't spill over to adjacent hotel, it would head north towards where it's supposed to go, so I think they're, they're addressing that, which is a pretty simple fix. For the SWIFT, we asked that it's, uh, you know, coordinated and finalized with the final drawings, I think I mentioned before. Uh, the three parking spaces now are added, just make sure it's, it's up to date, just simple things. We also took a look at the traffic letter, um, that was sent over to us, I understand there's a DOT permit coming. Uh, so the driveway access, all that stuff's gonna be worked out with DOT. Um, I think the current setup is probably the best solution, you know, uh, combined access. You're moving the dentist's access to the main driveway, you're actually improving, uh, you know, conditions there so that cars aren't, um, using two driveways to, to get out off the, off the road there, so it's a streamlined entrance and exit. It's actually the best solution, and I think the, what DOT recommends the most, uh, for this, for this development. Park turns were provided, and I think we, we addressed that, that the roads will be widened, um, so that was addressed. Several letters were received from DOH, Green County, um, I know that the applicant responded to these. So a lot of our comments are, are, um, you know, hand in hand with the letters we received, you know, water, sewer. Uh, there was, will be subject to, uh, those agencies reviewed, uh, addressed, so. We still have some agencies being worked out, um, from the applicant, that will be, that we'll get to see obviously those approvals.
Was anybody reaching out to DOH, I mean, they, former health tax, you know, said, hey, contact us because sources of contaminant are maybe too close to the well.
Yeah, so they, I think they issued a letter, um, and I, I don't know if, if we responded to, because they, they asked the question about whether your food, whether your profits are gonna be fifty percent, uh, or more with, with the food service, like, you know, do you know how your profits come in? Is it, is it mainly fuel? Yeah, okay. So then that would just, um, that would just kick over to Ag and Markets and they would have to review, because this is a different jurisdiction, so.
Well, did we get enough site plan where the water and the sewer lines are flowing? Uh, you know, we don't know where the sewer discharge is, yet.
Yeah.
I don't know if anyone knows, if anyone found a pipe. Um, but I mean, that was the Department of Health's concern.
Yeah.
That there's supposed to be separation between the two.
Yes.
And I don't know if it's being addressed.
So that's gonna be, so since DOH is gonna be under jurisdiction here, uh, I believe Ag and Markets will be reviewing this for, for water and sewer. Uh, so they would have comment on water and sewer.
So have they received any information about this project?
I don't believe you've responded to DOH's letter.
Um, I.
Ag and Mark.
Page.
I'll check with.
Oh, two things.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Is there a response to DOH and have you contacted Ag and Markets?
I, I, my guy Kevin, who normally does this, couldn't make it today, so I, I'm sorry, but I have to check with him. I know it's on our list of things to do if, if we haven't already.
So the water and sewer, obviously that would be, uh, you know, a condition, so that, that letter from Ag and Markets or DOH is, is received and approved. And it, it wouldn't be able to, uh, install or use the system until that's, that letter is.
Well, you can't contact them because you really don't have the details regarding the systems, is that correct?
I mean, we have.
I mean, we, what we have would not be enough for them to approve the system.
Probably not.
Okay, that's one.
So I think as information comes in, once they do the, the yield tests in May, uh, you know, we'll have more information regarding the water and sewer.
So, would it be foolish to say, why don't you bring it under the thruway? The water is simmering.
He's persistent.
As part of your project of coming into our town, you know, yeah.
They're talking three hundred thousand dollars added to what they're doing already.
Well, they would have to do that anyway, to put water in sewer there.
That's the whole separate thing, it's nothing to do with us, I'm sorry.
Right.
Okay, uh.
So I think that's a majority, like I said, there's a lot of things that they can tidy up on and you need, uh, you know, water and sewer information. Um, I think, you know, the plans are, are, are well designed, you know, the stormwater is well designed. Um, we think we can make things conditions of the decision, and we can formulate that, that statement. Um, but, you know, there are still some things that we have to button up to make sure they're, you know, full hundred percent drawings.
Okay, well, thanks, Camille, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Can I just pull up one more thing? Um, the good news is the, the hair in their, whatever it's called, is not, not gonna be a problem.
The hairier solid. The hairier in the river, sorry.
Yeah. It's, uh, apparently there's a twenty-five acre cutoff on that.
Yeah, yeah, you're well under it, yeah.
And, um, yeah, we, you can do anything without, uh, you know, the Department of Health, the D E C approvals, you'll, you'll go to jail. So we know we need those approvals before we can use the septic system. And so, yeah, we would, we would ask that, if possible, that we can, you know, get a vote and contingent on, on those items that you just addressed, but.
I don't know, my, my, my thoughts is there's too much stuff out there. Um, and a lot of it, I think, should have been addressed, my, my, my opinion, by now, especially some of your basic infrastructure stuff. I think some of that could have been further along than what it is now. You know, I don't know, I'd like to put it out to the board to get everybody else's thoughts on this.
I agree, I think there's too many ma, there are actually major issues that need to be finalized. And granted, I'm sure they will be, but I don't think that any kind of, I'd give any kind of approval to move the site plan and everything.
Okay, Bobby, any other guys have thoughts on that?
I appreciate the detailed list he's given, it seems like we'd be here right in very long.
It'd be a long resolution with all the, uh, conditions.
Do you have an idea of where you could forecast, uh, um, some of the answers to some of the questions? A lot of them, um, were very easy and by the next meeting for sure. The, the, the long lead items will be the, the well and the septic. Getting DOH to probably, uh, approval on well water to usage could take a, a year, easy with the testing and the, that has to be done. Like I mentioned before, a lot of projects are built in tandem with seeking approvals to, to, to use water, because it just takes a lot of time. But, so, um, the septic system, I think we're gonna have tested this month and probably have good information for you by the next time we're here. And a lot of the things he spoke about are, like showing exterior screening and, um, um, the flush curb thing and, and stuff like that, I think that's very easy and quick to do.
I can't imagine getting a building permit till you're sure the water is positive.
I mean, they.
Maybe, boy, that'd be, that'd be a lot of money spent there, and then you don't, no water source. Now, do you have anybody else's thoughts on that, you know?
So, did I just hear right that the project, what would realistically be the, uh, uh, shovel in the ground start date if everything went your way right now? Because you still have to get that, that approved, the water approved?
Well, no, so you could at risk, you could build a building at risk and, and run the risk of not having water. That's not.
Doesn't seem like that's how we operate, so.
Yeah, you, you build houses and you put the well in later, does something last?
No. Except for the fact that in some of that area down there, there was always water or septic problems way back with Howard Johnson, think about it.
No, so. Well, I, I'm certain, uh, I, uh. I want to take a vote on no resolution or just.
I, I think it's a good idea to take the vote because I don't think, there's just too many outstanding issues here for this type of project. Um, it's not like they're minor issues. And granted, you're saying they can be com- com- uh, resolved within a month. Well, that's great.
That, that don't sound like a month, but you know.
I, I don't control either. So, you know, I really don't know how we can approve a project. That doesn't have the water, the well, the septic, um. You know, Ag and Markets, that's probably not gonna be a real big deal for you. We don't think. Yeah. But if you don't have water and septic, I think it's gonna be a real big deal. Uh.
Right.
So I, I, I don't think, I certainly would not vote to move forward on this.
We, we don't have a prepared resolution tonight for you, let alone one with all those conditions. And that's, and I think. That would, that would have to be put into it.
Especially things short to, to be built and then, uh, to find out that the septic has to be moved to.
And you gotta remember, the Sieg does move to work fast.
Okay, so. I, I, I think it's, I think it's.
Just, uh, like, it's, it's fairly typical for, you know, you could, you could approve the project or make a decision on the project. Subject to those conditions of, you know, confirming the water, the sewer. They, if they have, if they make major changes to the site plan or the utilities, they'll have to come back and, and address those, uh, afterwards if that's. If that's made a condition, but, um, you know, a lot of my comments, I know I had a lot to say, but they are addressable, you know, with quick fix. I think, like we said, the water sewer is the big one. We're waiting for those test results. You know, you could, you could move forward with a decision, um, subject to conditions, but that's up to you to decide.
I think we should wait till next month and see what your progress is. And then depending on the progress.
Well, the well test isn't till after the next meeting.
But even with.
I'm already done. Like you said, normally we have a resolution. We don't have a resolution for you. Let alone one with all the conditions that were mentioned. And who does that?
Yeah.
Town attorney does that for us?
Yeah.
Typically.
This, with the amount of stuff that's in here, it would be a long resolution. I really'd like to see a lot of it knocked off.
Yeah, I agree.
You know?
So I, yeah, and we could come back next month and have seventy-five percent of that knockoff, especially the Easter comments. But as far as, even if we do the well test, it's a Department of Health approvals take a long, long time.
It can be a condition.
I prefer five conditions instead of fifty conditions.
Yeah, exactly.
And not one being assigned at the end of the, we're gonna be here a month of Sundays writing this all out.
Yes.
So I would prefer, I'd prefer, I think everybody's in agreement right now is. Let's get this knocked off. Come back with maps that show the wider thing. So what we have is what we're gonna get as close as possible.
Now, granted, there may be some changes down the road. Hopefully not, but there's just, I mean, there's pages of things.
I mean, ju- just, just getting the maps correct, showing your, ways for your water and sewer. I mean, that's something, they ought to be able to address that, some of the things, you know?
So which one are you referring to?
Uh, the, the utility easements.
Yeah.
That's not shown, I believe, right?
Yes, for the, uh, for the survey consolidation plan. So just, just having that on there. Um, that, that really doesn't have to be a condition of this application. You could have a lot of consolidation happen.
Well, I, I get it, but.
Yes, it is another.
Why can't some of these things just be done, be done with?
Yeah.
You know?
You know, we, we've had a few experiences where, you know, something's not there and I'm not saying you're going to do this. But it, it just doesn't happen afterwards. So we'd like to get as much as possible upfront. We want you to move forward. We're not trying to really hold you up. We want you there and we want your business open, but we also want, uh. Things done as quickly as possible in the right manner. So I mean, if, if we're waiting till next month and seeing how many things we can.
Knock off the list.
Yeah. What you.
Again, if you're good and just keep in touch with the guys over at Creighton Manning, you know, and they're.
Yeah, like I said, I think they, they've done a great job addressing all of them and it, it does sound like a lot of items, but they, they can easily address these in, you know, in one submission.
Right.
You know, it's up to the board what they think is the threshold, but I think, um, the plans are, are largely there and there's the changes that I'm asking are going to be substantial. But that's.
So you think it should be in good shape by next month?
I think so. If they address, you know, if they address what I asked and then the, the water and sewer is obviously the big, the big.
Yes.
But, uh, that can always be a.
And that's not gonna be by next month, but that will be.
I, I would think the sewer would ought to be able to be resolved by then. My God, you know, it's not like you're, and if you're just doing a, oh, municipality investigation.
I guess I don't understand why it couldn't have been scoped already. Why, why this?
That's what I was saying.
I said this two meetings ago. Why, why, where, where's the camera?
Right.
It wasn't that frozen.
Right, I don't know. And, and we, we can do that, but that's not the end, right? That gives us the information what the system is. We revise everything. Places are good, the slopes, all that, but the, the Department of Health approval to get that system working is beyond that. Or we could.
Yeah, but we don't even have it on paper.
Well, the survey actually.
Do we have it on paper?
No, we do. The survey actually shows the septic system on paper.
We have the other Bristol's, both Bristol's for the other site though. I mean.
No, for this site, right? I believe, yes.
No, it says, it says. You're, you're.
No, the plans say Bristol for construction, the tanks and stuff, but the survey actually shows the system components on our, on our plan.
But nothing's been verified.
Well, they're, they're visible from the top. They're there.
Okay, so by next month, May ninth, let's go next week, eighth. Okay, well then.
And you'll forward your investigation over?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Hey, um. Tag one, I guess, Loadstar. Uh, you guys all with Loadstar? Okay, come forward, please. So where, where, uh, you just come up, let's, and tell, uh, so we get on, on the record who you are.
Uh, Alec Glad from the law firm, I'm cutting in favor.
Yeah.
Uh, Adam Rolls, project developer for Loadstar Energy.
Yeah. Where are you at with that list that we had from resolutions? I, I, my understanding is you had tackled a lot of stuff. I mean, that, that didn't really have to do with the extension, but just carry.
Yeah, so I think the only outstanding item, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the decommissioning plan approval from the town board. It is in front of the town supervisor. We're just waiting for that to be signed off on.
Okay.
Once that's in, then we can apply, pull the building permit and then wait until November first to start construction.
Okay. All right, um.
Um.
Project consult?
I can go, good?
One four oh seven three.
I do, yeah, it's right behind the.
Okay, all right. Oh, all right, okay.
Okay.
Good God. You know how many nodes there are in this town?
More than one, fourteen thousand and seventy-five.
Uh, April had brought up a point.
Yeah, that's it next to that we can.
I'm sorry, was that?
You gotta go there.
Yeah, I know.
I, I, and I really don't see it being a problem. Maybe I'm looking at wrong. I just wanted to get everybody's thoughts on that, you know?
I can give a town.
Okay. In the new solar laws. It says they need special use permit and so. But, uh, the way I, the way I see it. Yeah, the application originally was under the old. So. Alec, please. You know what I'm getting at, Frank?
I'm getting somewhere. Sorry, I was doing two things at once and I heard, and I, yeah.
I, so, so I guess going forward, you know. Seeing how this app, the original application was under the old, I, I don't see why we would even want to entertain messing with what the specified in the note.
I'm no attorney?
Yeah.
Well, that's a problem with these extensions. Uh, I'm not sure.
Did we get a, a, a comment from her on that?
No, we didn't. We didn't.
When did we get this letter?
March, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I went with the shortest possible time in the code to be conservative. So this is your general site plan review requirement is a one year.
Yeah.
Approval. So this has nothing to do with any of the solar laws. I went with the shortest amount of time. So if you grant the extension. You're allowed to grant one additional year for us to pull a building permit, start actual construction, which is our plan in the fall. Once the no cut period ends.
But he, he, like I say, even if it did, somebody did try to nitpick it that we needed the site plan, I mean, special use permit. I mean, they basically jumped, jumped through all the hoops. It's the same, same process. Same application, so.
Well, we, one, one, one time, I think, is, uh, where we're our limit.
Yeah, so I.
Going forward, right?
If everybody's in agreement.
Well, I'm not even.
Okay, well, if everybody's in, in agreement, we'll just do the resolution.
Agreement to give the resolution.
Okay. Right, then we'll, okay, I'll just read the resolution. Whereas LSC Montserrat LLC, the applicant wishing to construct a four point eight megawatt AC utility scale. Solar collector system to be known as New Baltimore Solar Project and parcel bearing tax map number seven point oh three dash one dash seven located. One four zero seven three Route nine W, New Baltimore, New York, presented site plan application at February ninth, twenty twenty-three town. New Baltimore Planning Board meeting and receive final site plan approval. To April eleventh, twenty twenty-four Planning Board meeting and rest pursuant to town, the Baltimore Town Code, section one twelve dash three six, which states unless. Otherwise specified or extended by the planning board, the site plan approval shall expire after one year of the approval filing date. If the applicant has not obtained a building permit or started actual construction as defined in Article XV one as, uh, as this chapter and. Whereas since required building permit has not been obtained or construction commenced, the applicant, through their returning, Alec Glad. Has submitted a March twenty, uh, you know, a, a March twenty-five, twenty twenty-five letter. And advising that the applicant had been unable to secure the necessary United States Army Corps Engineers permit, delaying the building permit application and requesting the extension. Whereas the planning board and its April tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting discussed the request, therefore be it resolved. That the site plan be extended for one year commencing on April eleventh, twenty twenty-six pursuant to Town Code, section one twelve dash three six slash C.
A motion to prove that the resolution ready site plan one year extension.
Give me your second, second, second my bill, on, on favor?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Uh, anybody else? I, I.
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 Okay, well, we have two no's and five, five I's. Motion carries. Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, with the, um, tariffs, have you, I'm assuming you're getting your panels from China. The most, most projects are, um, has there been any, has there been any impact based on the tariffs and what's going on with China?
Of course, with any industry, there's impacts due to che- to tariffs. Um, I will say that the modules that we are using for this project are called Sylfab. Um, five hundred forty watt modules and they're made here in the USA.
They're made in USA?
Good for you.
Yeah, we were doing that pre-tariff. Now we're definitely doing that.
Well, that's something. I asked the question.
So you.
Uh, Loadstar Energy.
No, the name of the.
Oh.
The taller panel company.
Solar panel.
Um, they're Sylfab. Um. Uh, that's a good question. I, I read that.
I'm sorry, the USA, you know?
USA, general region of the USA.
So do you think?
General region of the USA.
Means that they're built somewhere in America.
Okay, I just didn't know who were getting this. So do you think you're prepared, um, when the bats go home, to get going on that project?
Yes, yeah, we were so close, um, to, to get it done before March thirty-first. I think we ended up getting our USAC final review and, uh. Approval under our nationwide permits on April first, which is sort of poetic.
So quarter of years, is that the same day as?
Yes, they got.
Oh, no, the same day that the no cut.
Oh, okay. No, you, oh, yeah, you were saying.
Yeah, yeah, they answered our calls after, you know, forty-five weeks, so.
The specifics for what your, with the Army Corps of Engineers, what exactly did, were you waiting for? Which part of the project?
We were waiting for a review of our stormwater pollution prevention plan.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, and basically what contributed to the long timeline of the process. Was the DEC's review and issuance of the water quality certificate that we ended up getting just, I think, back in November, um, of twenty twenty-four. And then it was passed on to the Army Corps for their final review after coordination with the DEC.
Well, I thought some, the, oh, maybe DEC, I thought the, the plan was submitted both to DEC and the Army Corps at the same time.
It was.
Oh, okay.
It was.
I know DEC sometimes forgets that.
Yeah, but af- after the DEC's final issuance, the WQC, it goes back to the Army Corps for a final review. And then we got put on hold, um, due to some, um, uh, federal hold, uh, and an order to the Army Corps of Engineers stop reviewing renewable energy projects. And stop prioritizing them. That hold was lifted about in three weeks after it was given and the review continued.
More government delay.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sorry, Alec.
I'd like to know the location. I've got this gentleman to tell me it's near Manor Road.
Right across from your house.
Listen, I got two train tracks and everything else on the doorway. You can't be on my road. And this isn't that far. If this is Manor Road, it's not that far.
You don't see it, you won't see it.
I don't care if I see it. I don't want them cutting more God blessed trees down unless I get a promise that they gotta replace every tree I go off.
Where they're gonna, where they're going, they're gonna be wrecking hayfields.
Hayfield, that's your property. That's your money, not mine. So is it by Manor Road? Because don't we have the new?
It's west of nine W.
Okay, I can go for that. Is this near where Kenny and Barbara thinks? Problem, or shut up, I see that.
It's back by the old quarry.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I mean. Okay.
All right.
Thank you. I gotta know my locations. I'll go with you.
All right. Oh, thanks, Camille.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, now.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Now.
Who's? He's here for twenty-one B, the second one.
Thank you for, uh.
I'm sorry, for the record, could we get your name?
Yeah, um, my name is Paul Newman. I'm a builder and developer. I'm working with the Gold Rule to develop the property to the north. Of twenty-one B, Travel Plaza. And I have, I think you just have a little bit larger ones.
No, this is, this is just north of the twenty. Literally.
There's actually a site that's in between it.
Oh, so it's gonna be next to it, not, have anything to do with that?
Yeah, no, it, it's in the back. So it's longer for the way, it's still in the, in the commercial zone. So I appreciate the board meeting with us today. Um. You know, would, I, I usually have these, I usually have these meetings like in conference rooms. Because it's just, it's a preliminary, it's a, it's a preliminary meeting. Basically what I want is I want like the board input back. And the towns input on what we're proposing to do there. Because it's quite, I mean, it's an ambitious, you know, development. So what we're looking to do is we're looking to provide a truck maintenance facility, about thirty-seven thousand square feet, which would do eighteen wheeler repairs. Um, uh, truck washes. Um, we're also gonna do a smaller, like, convenience store.
Oh, boy.
And, um, basically it's a half, it's half the size of the existing twenty-one B facility right now. It will not have the food vendor thing that's being planned for down there on half of that building. Right now, that twenty-one B is, it's a convenience store and then the other half's gonna be a marketplace. There's food vendors in it. Um, what we're looking to do there is just a convenience store, um, cash register, um, and probably maybe a couple of showers and some, you know, toilet facilities for truckers that are there. Um, we're also looking to do. Um, we're also looking to do, oh, I'm sorry, add, um, six more fuel pumps there, which will be diesel, diesel pumps and, um, you know, and regular gas and fuel pumps there. Um, we're also looking to do, um, I'm going, I'm just gonna go through this fast. I'm sorry, because I don't wanna waste, I don't wanna waste everybody's time, but we're looking also to do a development of a mixed use, uh, building along that 9W corridor. Sort of a 20,000 square foot, um, retail building with about 40 apartment units above that. And then in the back of that, yeah, 40 apartment units above that, and a back of that, we're looking to do, um, 204, um, affordable, uh, housing units in the back too.
How big is this? How big is this piece of property?
It's big, it's a big.
This is 20, it's 27 acres. But it's, I, I think labeled on that, it's got 30 acres, but it's a little bit, a little bit more than that. We can pass one of those.
How many phases are you doing?
No, this could, this will be multiple phases on this.
Thank you.
I think probably which is the most important is the, is the, um, the truck repair facility and those additional pumps in that little convenience store. But we understand that the residential component, it's gonna take some time. You know, we understand.
I see that it's connected directly to the trucks, the, from the truck stop.
Yeah, no, the truck stop is actually on that rendering, the truck stop's far to the right.
Access Road 21B.
Oh, yes.
So we do have, yeah, we do. So trucks are gonna be able to come in off the thruway and come, they're gonna exit here?
Yeah, they can. They can, well, they can enter from that side or they can enter from here and they can make your way this way.
Is there gonna be a toll booth then?
Um, no, there wouldn't be a toll booth on that.
No, you know what I mean? How are they paying their tolls if they're getting off the stop?
Well, they get, they get off from the exit 21B and then they get on 9W. That's how they act, that's how they exit, or I'm sorry, that's how they access this. They come off of, there's an exit, the 21B exit. They go down to 9W and then they turn onto 21B.
This, this is the truck stop down here, existing. Okay, that's not, okay, I'm, okay, I'm gonna, I'm thinking the travel plaza.
This is the existing truck stop.
Gotcha.
This is, is this the base for repairs for your truck?
Yeah, that's repairs.
So obviously, this is something, have you, they've discussed with them and they want this?
Yes, they do. Yeah, they do.
Owned by the same people, by any chance?
Well, there's a, there's two partners. Um, AGM Associates owns the 21B Travel Plaza. There's two partners that's associated with AGM, or AGM Associates. Those two partners are doing the development to the north.
Gotcha.
And that's the Gold Group.
Where are you from?
Me? Oh, I'm, I'm from the area. I'm from the Capital District. The Gold Group is that.
Capital District is quite large. Where are you from? Thank you.
Now, uh, something we're kind of looking at here is when you throw this housing in uh, of that size, that throws it in a different zone.
Yes. The whole property is zone commercial right now. We understand we have to go for zone to have that air, that particular component resolve.
Yeah.
How many acres are you looking at?
That's about, it's around 12 acres.
Is this all one parcel now?
Excuse me?
Is this all one?
It's one parcel.
See, this would fall under, um.
An excuse, isn't it?
Well, it wouldn't fall under just commercial, that.
Well, I gotta wonder if it should be a planned development district. Again.
That's, I think that's what we're probably, we're asking the board.
Could have another push made to be going to the town board prior to coming to us.
Which means you're gonna have public water.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I, that's, it's kind of smirked and smiled when they were talking about extending the sewer and water because I actually would like to discuss with the other business owners. Maybe possibly, I mean, I know the town's not gonna want to flip the bill to bring sewer and water all the way down to the Travel Plaza. Because right now, 21B is currently going through a major septic system. And it's very, very costly. It's very, very complex. So in order to be able to do that, that's gonna obviously require a treatment plant there. We would have no, there's no way around that. We couldn't do the same kind of type of septic system that's being down on the, being down on the 21B Travel Plaza.
Not for that kind of housing.
No, not for that kind of housing. So we are strong interested in extending that district. And if possibly the Best Western or the gentleman that was here earlier and maybe the Holiday Inn and a few of the other businesses along that corridor are looking, you know, potentially are interested in sharing that burden. We would definitely be interested in kind of spearheading that. And I know that, but it sounds, it sounds as the homeowners would, would like that to.
Well, they've had a problem. I mean, it's been a problem area. Let's face it.
But I think there's enough businesses there, especially with the development like that. That really, that residential component really does need it. It really does. If, if, if that, you know, if the board doesn't approve that.
Are these town houses?
No, it would be, it would be apartments. It would be affordable housing, apartment units.
Okay.
Now, we'll do them as, as nice as we possibly can, just within a certain price point.
Can you guarantee there's gonna be enough water?
That, that I can't.
That's, that's why we're strong.
We think that that pro, this project right here could be a catalyst to hopefully bring that sewer district all the way up that road. I don't know where it stops. I think it starts before, obviously, it starts before the Best Western and where their project was going to be. I don't know where that terminates from.
Everything is on the south side of the thruway.
It's on the south side?
Everything, water and sewer.
It is. Okay. Where does it, where does it stop completely? Is it right at the thruway or is it before the Best Western?
Well, the water goes to Cooksaki Antique Center, which is just right below. As a matter of fact, the water line extends in a little bit to Water Main. There's a high, height just north of that.
Who's the district for that?
That's a whole different line going on.
All right.
They extended it, uh, under the thruway, well, many years ago, District 2.
It does extend under?
They had to rebuild that pipeline just a few years ago.
That's water?
Yes.
That's water. Where does the sewer?
Sheller Park.
That's all, that's all private sewer.
It's by the trailer park, right?
That does help on the sewer.
The sewer is by the trailer park, right?
You mean the municipal sewer for Cooksaki, yes.
Where, where does that turn at?
There's a mobile, Dietrich's.
Yeah.
It's there.
It's on the west side, isn't it?
Because we'd be interested in trying to bring that up too, obviously, for that to happen.
Can a sewer treatment, uh, plant handle an extension?
That's other questions.
Well, see, you're, you're, you're really starting to run place. You'd have to go talk to the town board and they would have to talk to the Cooksaki Town Board. It's, yeah.
I understand. This is a process. We're gonna, there's a lot of people we have to talk to. And I, um, we're hoping that maybe we can work together with the town and with the business owners of that quarter to get that water and sewer, you know, or even, or extended.
So where would the sewer flow to? I'm curious.
It's probably, it'd be pumped, currently, it's pumped through the, there's a lift station, I believe, down, you know, where Empire Wines and Liquors.
Oh, yeah, that big, the big building warehouse.
Yeah.
Does anybody?
It's not going towards Cooksaki, is it?
Yeah, it's all gotta go to Cooksaki. There's nowhere else to go. It has to go to their facility.
So that pump station is back there, but would?
No, it's up along that.
The water goes to.
But that's a, a little different than residential.
And then there.
You'd have to find out.
It's in Ripley's Believe It or Not.
So the water is it?
Through the cemetery, Chestnut Lawn.
Yes.
It's in Ripley's Believe It or Not, is the only cemetery that had to be divided in half for state highway. But the water ends right there north of the cemetery, Chestnut Lawn.
Does anybody remember how we used to say there was an underwater supply in the thruway in Cooksaki area?
In Aquifer.
Yeah. How far south? Do you remember?
I haven't been drilling much down there.
Well, I know somebody that drilled there this past month and hit 50 gallons a minute. So I'm just throwing that out here.
Nevertheless, this would, you would need to have municipal water.
Yes, absolutely.
You could look for that.
Yeah. It's a dream.
We're on the board, what just happened?
Seven day a week.
Complicated by the new, new project's going in. In Cooksaki as well.
What's in houses?
At the end of my road, at the end of Lafayette.
Yes, are they single family?
There was something like 300 house development going in, yeah.
So they would be interested in that too, right? Are there, could they already?
They're already there. We already, I already pay my water money.
So they can support that?
Yes, but then to extend and do all that, I don't know, but there is.
Hate to say it. You, you've got a long roadmap.
No, I understand. Yeah, I know, we figured.
You gotta consider schools too. There's gonna be, oh, listen, it's, yeah, but that's Cooksaki.
Well, no, really, RCS is taking in this huge housing development. Town in Bethlehem, but RCS schools, so we get all the low income people coming into this housing project. Near the Jericho Drive.
Okay.
Let me ask you this. I just a couple of questions before, um, I guess we wrap up. Because it, this is rarely for feedback and this has been helpful already, but does the town need this housing? And you just said there's 300 units going. And.
Supposedly.
There's an awful lot, there's an awful lot of houses for sale.
There's a lot of houses for sale?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Apartment houses.
It's a apartment.
We need apartments.
Yeah, that's what we need.
What is that? These, these, that's not apartments?
That is not apartments, yeah.
So we're looking to do apartments?
Well, I would recommend maybe doing a little study about that before I put all these in.
I'll tell you.
You know?
Like I said, that housing development, of course, from, uh, Jericho Drive, it's going to be in RCS schools.
Yeah, that's, that's a whole different area at this point.
I know, but that's apartments.
Okay, Ellie, um, I have a, so these would be one and two bedroom apartments or do you know that yet?
We haven't figured out the index yet, but it would be predominantly two bed.
Okay, because you're on the thruway as well.
Yeah.
Which, um, would make the difference than one family houses in Cooksaki, because people would be able to access Albany in 20 minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, it's a good location.
And Kingston.
Yes, especially between you.
I understand.
Take a look at our zoning.
Yes. It's a commercial zone that.
Yeah, but if you think of doing the PDD, look at all the requirements in it.
Okay.
It does require open space places, which I, you know, without a whole survey, I don't know what room you got.
We have a huge open space allocated for the septic system, which we do not want to do the septic system stuff.
There you go. So, yeah, yeah, take a look at the requirements, see how it fits your plans.
All right.
And then you'll see what steps need to be taken to proceed. I mean, they got so many different uses for everything.
But a PDD does demand public water.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they're gonna do public water. They're gonna need to, no matter what, no matter what. And so.
I don't think the public waters, to extend that is, is as bad as gonna be for that sewer. The sewer's gonna be our biggest hurdle.
Well, all your sewer is gonna be pumped. So what's the difference if it's a pressure water line or a pressure sewer line?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
It's gotta go under the thruway.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars a pop. Right there.
You got use for apartments? And a truck, and an 18 wheeler maintenance building?
And 120 parking spaces? I saw that.
Where's the closest maintenance building?
It's kind of, kind of shielded.
Those are the local electric charging stations somewhere.
Oh, we're gonna have those.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they're coming. They're coming on the 21B facility.
I have a question. So you, you're telling us that you did all of this design without having answers to any of these questions about the need for a maintenance center, apartments?
The concept, yeah.
Did take the evening, this is a, an evening.
No, I didn't, no, I didn't take it.
No.
I think it's more than.
This is just pictures.
It's, it's to give the board sort of visual, a, we envision there. And then it's really, really, this was the feedback, and we understand that this is gonna be an ever evolving process. It may look nothing like that.
I like the idea of having some nice mixed commercial.
Yeah.
You know, that's, you see.
Would you use it on a 9W corridor?
Any nice, anything nice like that.
I mean, real stores?
Yeah, I mean, well, here, we are getting a delicatessen. Do they have one?
I'm surprised to find a delicatessen.
Ellie was at a delicatessen once. That was a long time ago.
Artistic, artistic license.
Yeah, something like this up in, uh, the Troy area, uh, that I stop at occasionally coming home from work. And, um, you know, it's, it's done nicely and it, and it brings a, at least there in Troy area, it, it has brought um, a good mix of people.
I think with the influx of downstairs coming up here, apartments would be of interest.
Yeah.
Well, I even like.
This was a Starbucks. That'd be awesome.
Oh, yep.
We got a lot of trucks on the highway now. I mean, I don't know what the draw is other than money, but 9W is a pain in the ass now because there's so much diesel trucking.
The 21B, it, the location of 21B is pretty good because it's, I mean, it's directly right off the thruway.
Right.
So it's not like you don't, the trucks don't really have to go too far.
No.
They're just, they come in, they take around, they take the right, and they're in there.
Yeah, I prefer they turn around here than in my storage. Driving my lawn.
So they see all, you have all those apartments?
Oh, I know.
You know they're gonna, there you go.
Be more storage. It's gonna have to go up.
So anyhow, yes, I mean, it's, it was a lot of work for a concept, but we really, it's an important project, you know, for us because they do own the property up there. And, you know, we just want feedback from the board, whether it's a crazy idea or if it's something that we can probably work through. We understand it'll take some time.
I was.
I think clean up the area a little bit.
I was thinking back to that other place that wanted to have the storage and turnaround for, uh, 9W.
Anybody else have any more questions or comments?
Pennsylvania, I think, but.
Thank you for doing that informal meeting. Appreciate it.
You want to take these, will you?
Oh, it's the other guy that's.
We, we.
We don't need them. I got those on my email too. You can keep, you can hang out.
I want a mark.
I think they'll be around by the time my kids are old enough and I can throw them down there.
There you go, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, good night.
Oh, did you leave the card with any of the?
Oh, I didn't. I never, I never carry.
Never to be seen from again.
Everything's just.
Hey, I get them from Birch and Earth.
Okay, uh, moving along. Be awake, Alan.
Hopefully, I'm easier.
One thing that we kind of got 11th hour before the last meeting from our town business named engineer. Something about proposal lots eight and nine, based on a submitted document, it is unclear, proposal lots eight and nine meet the guidance of, uh, setbacks for fresh water. Did you see that?
I didn't see that.
Yes, I did. Eight and nine, based on submitted, it is unclear, proposal lots eight and nine.
Yeah, that came from DEC. I don't know how they couldn't, how they could review the plans. We had houses.
We looked at that last month. I, I don't think we did. Did we address that?
I know we went through that letter.
I think Alan maybe did it during the public hearing. I don't remember. I know it came on the day of the meeting.
Yes, it was, like I said, we just got it. I, I didn't, and I'm not sure what exactly, but I just wanted to address that. That's the one thing that I think is outstanding. You've ever seen that?
Well, see the maps.
I'm out.
I don't understand it.
You, you, you went through, you got all the wetlands designated, you got a hundred foot buffer built in, you put the septic in, you put the houses in.
Right.
Did they see that or they didn't get that one?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know what they re, I don't know what they reviewed.
Did you, did you see this, Alan?
I saw the letter.
Yeah. Maybe you could, uh, enlighten us on what she's questioning there.
I, I think DEC likes to send out prom, you know, they, they, they skim over it.
This is from our engineer.
They say it.
No, from DEC.
No, that's from DEC.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's where they don't want the kids playing in that hundred.
That's what DEC, Mary Beth, that's good. Mary Beth was good with everything.
The wetlands and stuff.
Right, she just.
I, I know, I was thinking she.
Said directly address it.
Oh, maybe she had passed it along. That's why I'm playing.
Yeah, she just said directly addressed lots eight and nine, the avoidance criteria. So the avoidance of the wetlands.
This, we were looking at another map last time and it didn't show the wetlands start until like back here. It was like a stream that comes through, but that wasn't a designated wetland. But this map shows it all right up to the road.
Is that by lots eight and nine there? Is that by lots eight and nine or?
Yeah.
Maybe show Alan what you're saying.
Right here. See how that's all designated wetland?
Correct.
Like that's the one map?
That's our map. That's, that's our map.
Okay. That's what I thought it didn't start until back here.
That was on the sketch map. Because the, what I took from D E C's website didn't show it to start until back there. But we actually paid North Country Ecological Services to come flag that. So this is actually delineated by, you know, that's why it looks so odd. They went out there and tied the ribbons. It surveyed all the points. So that's exact. And that's from our, that's our survey plan.
You think in D E C may not have agreed with that or? I'm just trying to, I just want to address.
I think because they looked at this map, it didn't, I'm guessing they didn't have these blow up maps that show houses and septic systems and so forth on. I'm, I'm guessing they had that map and say that eight and nine might be, you know, at the scale and everything else, but there's plenty of room to fit a house and septic and.
What, what's the acreage on eight and nine?
Nine is twenty-eight acres. And eight is five point nine seven.
Yeah, not even here. That shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. And just like I said, that was the one thing that in my mind, anybody, anybody else have anything else? They want to comment, questions, et cetera, on this? What's the next project?
Hopefully not.
We're gonna have to put a cot in here.
Do we want to do this renovation?
I do.
Okay. Get one thing off our plate. Okay. Whereas New York Land and Lakes Development LLC wishing to complete a ten lot major subdivision of a ninety-one acre parcel intersection of County Route fifty-one and County Route twenty-six, to be known as Pine Haven Subdivision. And your authorized representative, Alan Lord, submitted an application for bestification of the sketch subdivision plat at the September twelfth, twenty-fourth planning board meeting. Whereas the application, now having, now having submitted all required application material preliminary maps, the board continued discussion with Mr. Lord at the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Whereas a required public hearing have been duly noticed, was held on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, members of the public offering comment. Whereas at the April tenth, twenty twenty-five regular monthly meeting, the Long Environmental Assessment Forum would review the negative declaration given.
Can I stop you just for one second? You never signed that. We filled it out, but you never signed off on the.
Yeah.
We voted on it, correct?
No. No, cause you, what you did is you reviewed it and signed everything or marked everything, but didn't sign it. And I don't know why I don't have it on me, but I'm gonna get it.
Yeah, I don't think so. I remember.
Yeah, I think you held up on voting on the.
Yeah, and I'm trying to remember why.
Okay, then, I guess we'll.
We, we did the whole part two.
Yeah, we did. Cause now that you said that.
Was there something else then that Mary Beth was?
There had to be, and I'm, I probably, I don't remember what it was.
Well, or maybe you just can't remember. Well, then we need to, I'm glad you brought that up.
I'm sorry, I almost.
No.
No, they forgot about it.
I know. Okay, so reviewed it. So I guess basically.
This was the part one.
What we've got to do then is do a, I thought we voted on giving us a negative declaration?
Or we're not?
No, I, I, I don't think we did.
No, because, but I can't remember why we didn't. Let's see. Okay, so do you want a?
Well, then let's, let's.
A motion?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the CEQA part two.
You agree?
What?
Well, yeah, okay, that's.
Part two.
For a negative declaration.
Yeah, I think it's.
With it for a negative declaration?
Negative declaration. That's not what I wrote. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with, in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Just waiting on you.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I can't, I'm trying to remember why we held up too.
Yeah.
I know, but I talked to.
On public comment after the public hearing?
Maybe that's what it was.
Maybe.
I mean, and.
See, I put things in there.
And other than a few comments about runoff, which everybody was upstream of it.
Yeah.
So it really wasn't going to affect them.
You know, I think that is why.
Maybe that's why, yeah.
Yeah.
So now we can finish the renovation?
Okay, I'll, I'll sign this off afterwards.
Okay. It's been a long night.
Just back in, so I can sign it off.
Serious for the rest of the.
Okay, back, whereas at the April twentieth, twenty twenty-five event meeting, the Long Environmental Assessment Forum received with negative declaration in the purposes of CEQA and whereas the planning board determined there are no required improvements as outlined in section one one five dash nine of the town code. Whereas the, whereas following further discussion on the April tenth, twenty twenty-five regular monthly meeting, therefore be it resolved, Pine Haven Major Subdivision Preliminary Plat be approved with following conditions. That final major subdivision plat be submitted for approval within six months of this date. And that final fee in all amounts owed in escrow for consultant and legal review are required to be paid in full the time of submission of final plat.
A motion to approve the Pine Haven Major Subdivision Resolution.
Second?
All in favor?
Bill, aye.
Did you have questions?
Ellie, you say in second that that one?
Bill.
Okay, I'll second it.
Are those your final?
Okay, well then.
Yeah.
Now, where are you at with your, all your final stuff?
I have all the, I emailed you the final plat. I do have the final plat with me. Now, whether you want me to wait for another month or?
I would like to have our attorney put eyes on it.
Okay.
Now, what's everybody's thoughts on that? Um. And I'll, I'll, I'll get her thoughts on it.
Okay.
So you know how we have it?
Yep.
And see what she wants to do.
Okay.
When the resolution's complete, then when everybody's comfortable, if she's comfortable, et cetera, then we'll, we'll get stamped.
Okay.
Make sure you're all paid up.
Yeah, I think.
So far, we're all paid up, just the.
I owe you.
We'll have to check the escrow, I guess, to make sure that's all paid up. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't think Mary Beth succeeded the, the five.
No, I don't, I don't know, cause I don't handle that account. But I will make sure everything's ready to go. And send out the plat to Laura and have her review it and.
You want a hard copy or you have the?
I have the digital copy, but if you want to leave the hard copies so that we can do it at the next meeting if she approves it.
Here's one. I have a few more rolled up. Like if anybody, any of the members want one?
Well, this is, this is the final plat right here.
That's the final plat.
Okay. But it's. A copy.
What's that?
It's a copy. It's not what's gonna be brought to the county.
Um. Yes, that's what's gonna be brought to the, it's electronic signature.
Okay.
That's some.
Okay.
They take that now. I, I have a hard time being an old time surveyor, but now everything's electronic. They, they put the stamp and signature on them.
That's fine. I don't like, I know how the county. I don't wanna send you down there with.
No.
Them say that's not.
Well, Tom Zwickel always takes it and I never have a problem in Green County. Green County's easy for me, cause our attorney is here.
Okay.
So I think April just needs to punch her card. You know, do three.
Right, now that you've done three, you get a free.
You got two more.
So you got free culture?
Okay, well, thank you, Eva, for reminding us.
Yeah, no problem. I literally knew I had to do it and it went right out the door.
So do you want the check for final now or do you want to still wait?
We don't want the check right now. I, I don't know. Should I take the check or should I wait until Laura approves it and then take the check when the, the maps are signed?
Either or, I think he's good for it, you know?
Okay.
Here's the resolution that.
Okay.
So then, here's the, just to clarify, do, do they need to come back to another to have a resolution for final approval?
No, no, no.
No.
I just, what you done, whatever you want stamped.
Just.
Okay, you got it, okay.
I'll just bring it to her.
I'll just get it stamped, you know.
Do you want me to just leave them with you right now?
That would be fine. And you can leave the check too if you want, and then I, I will, I'm not gonna cash it until the maps are signed though. But if you don't want to come back here, you'll have to come back.
You'll have to come back and get the maps. I'm in town at all the.
How much was that piece of one?
All right. I, I got the.
You got mylar in there also?
Yeah, there's a, there's a set of mylars in there.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
We get more than one mylar.
Did you do some training for?
And just for, just FYI, there's, there's two spots to sign. I don't know if you need to sign both, but I had them put a sign on the front sheet and then the surveyor also put one on the survey plat. So maybe sign both of them, just the, but I want to file all the, I want to file the whole set, not just the survey plat, so that all the information's in the county clerk's.
I got terrified.
All right.
How's Kusaki approval going?
Good. We had our public hearing last Thursday on all three sections. I had to send out ninety letters. Um, and actually, it wasn't, you were there, but it wasn't that. I don't know what showed up, maybe there was thirty people, fifteen couples or whatever. There was groups. It seemed like there was groups of people. But there really wasn't anything substantial that, that came out of the public hearing. They, they did ask me to put together a little report on water, which, there's a lot of wells in the, in the area there. I came up with twenty-five wells out of the D E C database that are right around, cause there's two subdivisions right next to our property down there off of fifty-one. There are cul-de-sac roads going in.
Right.
So there's quite a few new road, new wells in the area down there and they all have pretty decent water. So I put that together for them and I think I think we're in good shape there. They seem to be happy with it.
Yeah, there's a lot of new houses been built down the Hendrickson Farm.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Here's some.
Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah, yeah, we've got the March thirteenth Pine Haven public hearing minutes.
No.
Where your motion approved the minutes for the March thirteenth.
Okay, motion to approve the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Pine Haven public hearing minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, second, my friend. Okay, then we have the regular monthly meetings minutes for March thirteenth.
Motion to approve March thirteenth, regular monthly planning board meeting, meeting minutes.
Second. Okay, I want to second it, definitely. It was the same time. All in favor?
Aye for both.
Motion carries.
Yeah.
All right.
A motion to close the meeting?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?